Good evening, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting. I've called a meeting to order at 6:31 on July 23rd, 2024. First order of business is the Secretary's report from July 9th. Anyone have any comments, corrections?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from...
I have one minor change.
Okay.
Item nine, for our adjournment. Catherine made the motion and Gates seconded the motion. Minor change.
Can I understand tires and name, which should be name of the movement. Tire prices corrected and name of the movement?
Yes, tire prices corrected. So in number seven, transfer station advisory committee. And I'm sure I misspoke last time, but the current ordinance has it at, I think, a dollar fifty a tire. And it's going up to three rate for regular vehicles. And then it's five dollars a tire now for trucks, going up to fifteen. So that's just that correction. And then Catherine's correction for number five. Okay, so with those two corrections made, can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion, accept the minutes from July 9th with the changes.
Second motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, audience of citizens. This is our chance for the public to state their name for the record and make comments to the board. Thank you for all coming, last group.
I guess we're close enough.
Okay.
Well, quick, so Mike Joy, Willsey Bookwell. It's great that we paved the bottom half of the road. I had no idea what was happening. Is there some sort of schedule that's out on the website? Or can you notice this we made? Because it was very inconvenient for me and my neighbors who were just discussing this that, you know, it's, I know the guys are trying to work and they're trying to give you, you know, hey, there's a half the road you can drive on, but not always. But not knowing it was even going to happen was very...
Yeah, I'm sure, very inconvenient.
Disheartening, I mean, I leave in the, you know, left at noon, then I came back and there's a grader at the bottom hill, you know, moving dirt all over the place. And it's like, there's, you know, there's no constable, there's no signs of road construction. They're trying to help you out at the same time, but I don't want to get in their way. And I had no idea what was happening, just can there be some sort of notification that, you know, it's great that you're paving, but it'd be nice to know that was happening so I can at least adjust my day and understand there were some inconveniences and, hey, the afternoon was not a good time. You come up and down the road? Okay, I'll plan around that, but not even having any... The group shows up one afternoon and then they start working the next afternoon. You know, they said, you know, boo, or there's no... I don't know if it's posted on the website, if there was an email that you put out on your weekly saying, hey, this is the road construction schedule. If there was, I apologize, but if there wasn't, I'd ask if we could, you know, at least put that out for the town where, you know, so residents, some residents can see it because not everybody gets your email. At least have someone understand that we're going to pave the road.
Right, thank you.
Please plan accordingly.
I agree with that, I'm sorry about that. And I think it was maybe just because of the muster, everybody was trying to get everything done or something. So that did slip through the cracks, the communication piece, which is key. So, sorry for your inconvenience.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Yes.
Gary Clark, 46, Laurelwood Drive. Just wondering if anybody's come out to take a look in Laurelwood?
I had it on the list for the DPW and I was told they were going out to look at it. So I would have assumed they've gotten there, but I will check on that tomorrow.
That would be great, thank you.
Tony Ball, 27, S63. This is just a website issue. If you go to the front page of the town website and you click on the, like, tonight's meeting, no agenda pops up. You have to go, it is in there, but you have to go fishing for it. You have to go to agendas or boards of commissions. I mean, it's a deep dive, but it doesn't show up on the front page.
You can't pull it off the calendar anymore.
Yeah.
The public meeting calendar.
The town court posts those, so I will speak to them tomorrow, thank you.
Yep.
Those are great things to know, because, you know, unless you visit yourself. Any other comments, Jerry?
I would like to thank whoever should be thanked for patching the erosion in Long Hill Road. I don't know who did that, but thank you.
That was on the list, so I chose DPW. I will pass that on, thank you. Just making myself notes. Okay, number four, reappointment. So we've got Jerry Roberts to the Gateway Commission term to expire 5/26. And for those who don't know, the Gateway Commission was established by state statute in 1973. And it's really to protect the scenic and environmental and habitat of the Connecticut River along what you can see from the river. That is sort of the, what your, your charge is. Jerry is here with us. Jerry, would you like to make any statement?
Just real quick, so as Pearl said, Gateway works actually with each town's design. Each town along the river selects a Gateway Commission or an alternate. And we basically assess any properties that need a special exemption or a special permit, meaning that they're over 4,000 square feet. And we just have a set of criteria that we measure that they're having not too great an impact on the traditional scene of the river. We pass along our comments to Zomen, who has the final say about what happens.
Thank you. So can I have a motion to reappoint Jerry Roberts?
Make a motion that Jerry Roberts be reappointed to the Gateway Commission with a term expiring May of 2026.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, the appointment of... When the videographer's phone goes off, that's the deal. So we have the appointment of tenant representative to the Deep River Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. April Corsetti is going to fulfill a term vacated by the resignation of Astasia Cowell, term to expire 2/1, February 1st, 2027. And so Joanne Horegon wrote, in compliance with state statute 840, they have to have somebody elected by the tenants to fulfill this board opening, the housing, Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. So she would, but we have to officially appoint at the Board of Selectmen meeting. So may I have a motion to appoint April?
I'll make a motion to appoint April Corsetti to fulfill the term vacated by the resignation of Astasia Cowell, term to expire 2/1, 2027.
Okay. I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number six, ARPA fund allocation recommendation. So the Board of Selectmen had a meeting yesterday and we need to decide what to do with our final allotment because contracts have to be signed by December 2024, money spent by 2026. So we're kind of at the end where we need to make these decisions, move it to the Board of Finance, hopefully move to a Board of Town Meeting. So what we had come up with was, should we announce?
Can you back up and say the amount and how you brought some back?
Yep, yeah. So we'll announce sort of what we came up with. We have about 220,000 remaining. We have 25,000 that we are pulling back from the park and rec allotment for the three-year music fest because they won't be able to spend it. They have to have contracts signed by this December. And given the nature of the music festival, you cannot sign contracts that far ahead. So that gives us about 245,000 to spend. Again, that's what we've come up with. We haven't verified the exact numbers with finance, but that was what we're going off with. So for that allotment, we've come up with the planning and zoning downtown master plan, 42,000. Transfer station, 100,000. Jerry Roberts and the tourism piece that was well received when it was presented, 20,000. Jaws of Life, the extradition tools, extra, whatever, the tools, 65,000. Generally, again, estimating. Winthrop Cemetery Fountain, that is broken, and that is one of the oldest cemeteries in the Old Sabre Colony that we own. So that is a $4,000 fountain that we would like to replace for them. And the Ride on Leaf Blower that the DPW desperately needs for 15,000. Excuse me. We are thinking that we are going to present a large borrow at some point, Board of Finance, perhaps. So if that, if the Jaws of Life goes into that, then our decision was to give more to the planning and zoning downtown master plan. So, but right now, these are the numbers that we're going to present to the Board of Finance tonight. And that adds up to...
The blower was 14, so then it adds to 245.
245. I talked to Eric today and he said, ah, it's probably about 15 now. So there might be a thousand dollars off or something, but for the most part, we'll go with 14 and present it as 245.
That's as we discussed, I'm comfortable with that allocation in our discussion of it.
I'm still on a big borrow, I would like to push that 65 onto the big borrow. So I want to stand pat on that, that I have no problem buying it. But if we can push onto the big borrow, great. If we can't, then we find money to pay for it, but...
And just for clarification for anybody listening to this, the concept of a big borrow is if we were to go and decide to take the cost of everything about a new fire station, the trucks, some of the police vehicles, et cetera. And the concept was taking that total amount and putting it in a referendum. So that's the big borrow.
Right.
And the town citizen re-then vote on that. And your point, Dwayne, I'm in agreement with you that if we do go to that, that that should be bundled in with it.
Correct.
Right. And the idea would be then to put that on the ballot in November so that the townspeople, and when they come out to vote for any elections out there, can also have their say with that. Okay, so can I have a motion to move forward as presented the Ride on Leaf Blower, Winthrop Cemetery Fountain, Jaws of Life, Tourism Peace Transfer Station for the 245?
Still moved?
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me. Okay, Town Hall and Region Four building updates. I lumped them all together. I thought maybe our building official was able to join us tonight. So I just came up with some little notes quickly. For Town Hall, we've got a mold issue in the basement that we've talked about before. We've had environmental companies come in. We've had a cleanup company come in and we're awaiting written proposals. As far as I know, we don't have anything from the building official yet. Did you see anything different? Okay. Was that you, maybe I missed an email if you sent it late or something?
No.
Okay. What we'd have to do in the basement is clean everything out, all the contents, then they clean, probably waterproof things. We do remediation, probably will require something done with our air conditioning units and a dehumidification system. So that would be what the cost would be, so. Town Hall, other things such as the auditorium, plaster issue. I'm still waiting for the second restoration company to come in and look because it's a historic building, we want to do it correctly. I did have an architect meet with me yesterday and thank you to Alan. He gave me a good, Alan from Centerbrook Architects, so it was Hoffman Architects came out, walked around to look at the envelope of the building. And they are going to do, give me a proposal to come and do thorough work, more thorough work, to get a, look at the soffit around the roof, you know, there's some gutter issues, that kind of thing. So we'll kind of get a good handle, hopefully, of everything we need and then we can figure out what our priorities will be, how we want to pay for it, what grants we can get or something, so. Region four, do you want to give the little update of Region four?
Today, the open bid for Phase Two of the mold, it was a rebid and it came in significantly low. We're very happy. They redesigned the bid package. What I mean by that is the school is going to supply all the valves where the contractor won't be able to market up and make 20, 30% on top of it. So that's where we saved almost a million dollars. So we have a meeting Thursday to do a scope review. The two bidders were Noble from Essex and Palateer from Clinton. Palateer is the parent low bidder. There's about $300,000 spread between the two bidders. Like I said, we have a meeting on Thursday at 5 o'clock to go through a scope and hopefully we're going to award it and they can get going. Either one of them will be getting going as soon as next week.
Great, and this was for Phase Two?
Phase Two. And like I said, we asked the finance department at the bid opening today to come to the meeting Thursday night with exact numbers of where we stand right now and how much money we have left. So, you know, I'll have a better handle on that after Thursday, but we're in good shape. And there was an alternate on the bid to extend the job because we heard from the contractors that the timetable was too short. So there was an alternate on the bid to extend it out to December 15th. And the savings is, it's not worth it. You know, one contractor was going to give $20,000 back and another was going to give 21,000. So it's not worth it, so we're going to still keep holding them till we have a finish around Thanksgiving time. And then on the fields, they were supposed to start putting the track down today. Due to the weather, they didn't put it down, but it's ready to go. And then hopefully within the next week to two, they're going to start putting the turf down on the football field. Backfield is coming along, that's probably a month away.
That's great, good report.
We're getting there.
Good. Any questions? Discussion? Okay, follow-up to drainage issue on Oak Ridge Drive. So that, I'm also kind of at a loss for exactly what the numbers are going to be. We did report at, I believe, our last meeting, kind of some general. And then we put the, kind of not put it on hold, but then the building inspector and our DPW, they met out there with an engineer and all the three companies that had given bids. And so they had, went back out for bid again with those companies.
My understanding is that it hasn't yet gone out to bid. And I'm wondering, I'm wondering about that, just looking at that. We met on the 8th, then the engineer looked at it on the 12th. And so, has it gone out to bid? I understand it is not.
I don't, I don't believe so. I believe that they're waiting for the engineer to get back with the pricing. I'm being told that the diameter of the pipe was going from X to Y. And so that'll also be repriced, catch base number be repriced. So that's the last time I had heard from the DPW. That they're waiting for Jacobson to get back to them with a...
Okay. I probably misunderstood. I thought they had talked to all the contractors and told them about the new size pipe.
They're waiting, they're waiting to...
All right, so they're waiting on that?
They're waiting for, waiting for the engineers to get back with the exact diagrams.
Okay. So no real report on that, except for waiting.
In times of the essence, right?
Okay, and number nine, America 250 Deep River Commission. So I just took a little blurb off the website, I mean, off the Connecticut website. So July 1st, 2021, Governor Lamont established a commission responsible for planning the state of Connecticut's multi-year commemoration, celebrations, and reflections of the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence, which will come up on July 4th, 2026. So they asked and encouraged all municipalities to come up with their own committee, commission or committee. So I would like to officially have a committee formed for Deep River and then we will be looking for people interested in serving on that committee. You know, to plan how Deep River is going to celebrate, whether it be events, activities. So I would like to form that tonight. I don't think it's officially been formed.
You want a motion to form it?
Yeah.
And what are the, how many people, I mean, just anyone that wants to get involved and help out?
I think so. I don't think it should be limited, do you think?
No.
I mean, what is your...
More than a myriad.
I just, I reached out to Rhonda at the Historical Society because her and I had talked last year when I wasn't in this role. And I was kind of surprised that it never was officially formed in the town. So I think we need to do that.
I'm just thinking on a commission, you might want to have some contained number on it. They can have sessions and open it and bring the public in and all of that. But if it's not formed with a tight number, progress might not occur. So I would suggest...
Well, if we call it a committee?
Five to six people.
Committee.
And then you get a chair and move forward from there.
Okay, we'll call it a committee. And you want to start with six people? Okay. All right, so can I have a motion to form a committee with just six people?
So moved?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? And you're right, then those six people can kind of branch it out, you know.
Hopefully, they'll get a lot of public involvement because it's a very exciting event.
Okay, number 10, Deep River Poet Laureate. I had this presentation I wanted to do, or at least announce because the Board of Selectmen, we have chosen our person based on recommendations that some of the public sent in. But he was unavailable to be here this evening, so we were going to table that until the next meeting, if that's okay. Is that okay with all you? But I did want to say, Selectmen Gates had a great idea to, we'll make the announcement at a Board of Selectmen meeting, but we'll actually do the official presentation and have an event at Deep River Day. We'll hold it right here in the auditorium upstairs and then we'll hear some poetry at that time and make it official, so. So that's tabled. All right, number 11, audience of citizens. Anyone from the polls like to make a comment?
Go ahead, go over. Two things, we mentioned the ARPA funds for Jaws of Life and then actually have that funded elsewhere. I think for Jaws of Life, from at least what I've heard from the fire departments, probably sooner than later that we need to go get that. So I'd say keep it on ARPA and then go get it now, not wait for a referendum to fall, it may or may not pass. And then we're still in the same situation of, I still need the Jaws of Life. And that's one of those, I don't need it until I need it back. And that's, I'll tell you, I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to be in my car hoping that somebody's like, well, it'll be here soon, don't worry.
Okay.
I implore the board to be more proactive with the funding for Jaws of Life. And the Ocean Report, we talked about that last meeting before. Have we gotten any feedback on that? I know we're waiting to try to have everybody come together. Has that happened yet?
Well, I will just report, so she did come in and verbally sit down with all the groups. We have not received our written report yet. So once that comes in, the Board of Selectmen will all be sitting down with whoever comes from Ocean. I don't believe it's the same inspector. And then at that time, they reveal what all the fines are. And we've been working on fixing, you know, abating what she has pointed out. So hopefully, that gets wrapped up.
Thank you, we're, that's all I have. Just in reference to the 250, when we all worked together to do the 75th anniversary, I forgot how many people were on that group, but I think what you did is assign, instead of inviting individuals, you invited organizations into it. So maybe a modification is if you have like the Historical Society to cover the history and heritage. I don't know whether, what other organizations need to be involved rather than just six citizens deciding the whole thing. That's just my thoughts.
Yeah, I had a similar thought. Grab some of those key players and then I think, as Catherine alluded to, then...
Yes, rather than...
The networking would start, the outreach.
So isn't just just six people who volunteer determine what happens, that we have the key players, the stakeholders, the organizations are represented. Like I said, we're already working on the history and heritage component. We're talking to other historical societies. And I'm sure that the other organizations will want to talk about whether we do a parade or events or things like that.
Anyone else? Okay, then I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
All right, so I'll adjourn the meeting at 6:55. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, tonight we're adjourned.
Good evening, everyone. And this is the regular meeting of the Deep River Board of, the regular July meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance. First order on our agenda is the approval of the June 25 minutes. Does anyone have any comments or would like to suggest we approve those minutes? Can I have a motion? That's a motion? Do I have a second? Second, thank you. Does anyone wish to discuss the minutes or just simply vote? All right, all those in favor of accepting the minutes, please say aye. Those against? Sure, thank you. Next item with, audience of citizens. Citizens, have you anything to share? We have nothing to share from citizens, so why is citizens? Bringing us to item four, Treasurer's Report. Tom?
Thanks. Just looking at the general fund account balances, looking from last month to this month, we're up $1,794,000. A lot of that has to do with, of course, the tax revenues that are coming in. If you compare it to last year at the same, same time, around the same time in July 24th, we're up $861,282.52. So that's, that's good. The capital improvements borrow, you see the 2022 capital improvement borrow account. There were no disbursements made during the last month. We did earn $1,869.10 in interest. And again, that's based on a 3% interest rate with Liberty Bank. And as you know, that's the highest rate allowable because of the type of account it is. Those were money proceeds from a bond issue that we put into an account until the disbursements are made into that account. And that was originally for $1,425,000. So you see right now, we're down to $758,998.99. The ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan, the balance, you see the balance there now and this account is 595, 466, 70. That actually did move like $10,743.27 from last month. I made four wire transfers during, during the month. Three of them actually were to our pension fund. On June 27th, I made actually three, three of those transfers. Two of them went into the Deep River Employees Account Fund totaling $308,865.53. But there are actually two separate, separate wires that were made. One was made for $191,095. The other one was $117,775.3, $770.53. And then there was a last, the third one that was for $57,301 and that went into the Deep River Volunteer Firefighters Pension. That was from our general fund to PNC Bank Empower Annuity Insurance Company of America. So those are those three, three transfers that were made into the pension, pension plan. The total of those three is $366,166.53. I also made another transfer on July 16th for $1,500,000. That went from the Citizens Bank General Fund to the Liberty Bank Municipal Sweep Money Market Account Fund where we get the 5% interest. The Education Equalization Grant monies for this fiscal year from 7/1/2024 to 6/30/2025. The total is $1,676,105. That's the amount that we'll be receiving. That's $6,459 more than last year. That's 6,459 dollars more than last year when that total was 1,669,646. So we'll be receiving, we get, as I said before at different of our meetings, that there's actually three disbursements that are made. One's made on 10/31 and that's a quarter of that, of the total. So on 10/31, we'll be getting 419,026 dollars and 25 cents. And then on January 31st, 2025, we'll get another quarter and that will be the same amount. And then on 4/30, 2025, we'll receive one half or 838,052 dollars and 50 cents. If you look at the total balances on this sheet, 9,774,602. If you compare that from, let's see, from last, last month, we're up a million, 911,758 dollars. Upcoming bond issues, you know, we have six, six bond issues with the town. One is our sewer construction bond, Clean Water Fund Project. Right now that has a balance of 332,448.77. We have the Kirtland River Street Sewer Project and right now that balance is 2,591,871.96. We have the Kirtland River Street Sewer Project Expansion Project. That balance is 533,942.1. We have the Capital Improvements Borrow Account and that's at 1,140,000. We have the Capital Purchases Account, which is at 500,000 balance. And we have the Energy Upgrade. That was the Energy Upgrade for the elementary school library and the town hall. And that's at 141,000. So these six bond issues, I'm taking actually as of 8/31/2024 the balances because we usually don't have a meeting in, in August. I'm not sure where we stand with that, but if we don't, the total balances of the six bond issues will be 5,239,260. Three payments are owed in the next month and a half. We have this, the regular Clean Water Fund Account that actually, we reduce that every month by 16,914.76. So if we, once we make the August 30, August 31st payment, that balance will be down to the 332,447.77. When we make that, when we make those two payments for July and August, we'll have 20 payments left on that bond issue, which was originally for 3,375,000 dollars. The second one that we'll be paying right now is on 8/15. That's the Capital Improvements Borrow with Dine Bank. That was originally for a million, 425. That was, that was, after we make the payment, there's a principal payment due plus interest. The principal paydown will be 95,000 dollars. The total with interest is 115,068 dollars and 75 cents. When we make that payment, it'll be down to a million, 140 and we have 12 years remaining on that. The Energy Upgrade, we'll be making a payment on August 15th. Principal of 28,200, interest of 2,326.50 for a total of 30,526.50. Once we make that payment, we'll be down to a principal of 141,000 and we'll have five years remaining on, on that account. That's it.
So the last two months, you told us that ARPA had 605. So you did indicate there was a draw, we distributed money to one of the projects?
There must have been, actually I remember signing some checks. There was for some smaller amounts of money. Yeah, I wasn't able to get ahold of me and Marie because she's on vacation, so I wasn't sure.
Probably the Music Fest.
Oh, yeah.
Music Fest, that money. And then the library also, I think they bought their circulation desk. I think that check came through since your last meeting.
Has the, has Music Fest been totaled up yet?
It's about 35,000, is that.
Seems high. But we said it was supposed to stay at 25, 25, 25, came in 30,000. More money to go out or as Tom was pointing out? Have you only spent some, there's more money going out?
That was what he estimated was total, around 35. He hasn't gotten the police bill yet. And I just signed a bill for top notch for electrical today. So there'll be a couple more bills coming out, but.
That's right, I remember signing that, yeah, signing that check, yeah.
So how did they go over without knowing about it?
That bill could, that first year could be 40,000 dollars. That's just putting pieces, you just said, is that what we spent?
No, he estimated it, it was kind of a total of 35. But the outstanding bills are already included in his verbal total of what he thought. Maybe added it up.
So you're expressing concern that it went 10,000 over when we had said 25,000 per year and there did not appear to be any control in that?
It's a good summary.
Yeah. Yeah, we were equally concerned, but the event had to happen at that point, so.
Now, Tom, you celebrated, we have more money right in the beginning. And I, I join in your celebration. We will look at, actually it was sent out to all of us. We've collected about 35, 3,500 in taxes. My non-scientific estimate is we spent about a million a month. I guess you make like 3.5, you spend a million. Do you look at those, it just doesn't seem to quite fit close?
Well, I think the big, the big check that was, was signed was from the regional, regional school. It was, oh geez, we're close to 700, 700,000, something like that. So that was, that was a large part of that.
We sign checks to the regional school all the time. What is this check that you write for the?
Well, that's actually the monthly, the monthly amount that we, we pay.
That would be in my non-scientific estimate of about a million and a half.
All I know is that there was a stack of checks that were, were signed. I, again, I, I didn't.
I just predict 3.5 and we're only a million off, but, okay.
Having said that, we are ahead of last year. We have again 861,282.52 more than we had last year at this, at this time.
All right. Selectmen, what do you have to share? What do you want to share?
Well, we've got a lot we can share. We all know we've had some issues at the town hall. We've got a whole problem with the basement. We've got plaster falling on the stage. So we've had some remediation companies come in. The building official has been working with them. We don't have a proposal yet, anything written down. But we've had multiple tours through the basement. So Dick Leighton is working on getting some hard, fast numbers. Just the clean out alone to, we've had like, the first estimate was like 30,000 dollars to clean it out. That would include renting a shredder, putting it out on Veterans Way, closing down. We have a lot of papers downstairs, you know, files that can be shredded. So we're lucky that we won't, we'll have less to clean, which when that John went through, they were cleaning papers, it was very expensive. So I don't have a full number for you there, but that'll be, that'll be a chunk of money. Then we have Oak Ridge Drive, that's another, that had the house, the drainage issue. And I just was confirmed that we don't have the second bids in on that. The scope of work changed a little bit once they consulted with the engineer. So we're waiting on that. And again, Dick Leighton is working hard to get those numbers. We had OSHA Inspector come in. She did a verbal sit-down with us, went over her findings. She now will present, will receive a certified copy of the report. And then at that time, we sit down with somebody from the office up there and they assign the actual, excuse me, the fines, the violation fines that come in play. So at that point, we'll know the numbers for that as well. At this point, I don't have any figures to throw up. The findings were a lot of smaller things, so that was a good thing. There wasn't any large blender things that were really a safety issue for our employees. So that was good. There were just a lot of little things that we could easily rectify, so that was good to know. And ARPA, so the Board of Selectmen met yesterday to finalize all our ARPA things. We are pulling back 25,000 from Park and Rec because we know they can't put their, they can't sign contracts till the end of this year and spend for that 2026 year, for the third year of the Music Festival. So given that, we assumed we had 220 to spend. We had added the 25 from Park and Rec and we came up with the following, and then a few copies. We came up with the following, a couple of you want to just share and look on. We want to do a ride on the East Bowl. We'd like to spend about 14,000 on the ride on the East Bowl for PDW. Withher Cemetery Fountain has recently broken and it's about 4,000 dollars. And that is a town asset. It's one of the oldest cemeteries in the Saper Colony. And it's really a nice gem, so I think we need to take care of that. So that's 4,000 dollars. We are proposing to get the extraction tool that the fire department wanted, Jaws of Life, for 65,000. We'd like to do the tourism piece that Jerry Roberts had presented, which we think will help EDC, it'll help the town of Brandon. 20,000 for that. Transfer station, 100,000. And where we are going to be spending that at the transfer station are, if we can't come up with the reconfiguration that we want for the road, we need recycled bins, at least three or four of those, 60,000. New oil shed at 15. Fence rails, we're missing a fence by our bulky waste that OSHA needs to be replaced. So that's priority. Signage, painting and new gutters on the building. So we've come up with about 100,000 to spend at the transfer station if we can't come up with the new road configuration in agreement. Our transfer advisory committee's been working very hard. They don't like the plan to redo the road and that configuration. So we decided to maybe put that a little on the back burner and see what else we could do for enforcement, signage, all these other things that people had, had identified and this committee has identified, so. So the transfer station, 200,000. And then the planning and zoning, the downtown master plan. At this point, they would give 42,000, which would add up to 245. Now, the Board of Selectmen would like, if we, Board of Finance moves forward with their large borrow, the firehouse and all the equipment. We would like to see the Jaws of Life maybe go into that large borrow, which would free up another 65,000. That then we would move, the Board of Selectmen is in agreement, to put that on the planning and zoning downtown master plan. They had originally requested 300,000 to do that large master plan of the town with all the different components. So we are cutting that down substantially. So if we could give them 100,000, that would be nice rather than 42. But that's up to you if you want to do the Jaws of Life now or put it in the large borrow. So that's the only.
Let me just catch that. There is a theme we have going that we would take to the town in November. A question. Should we do a firehouse and more trucks? If they approve that in November, there is absolutely no way that there can be a contract signed in December. How do you think it could be put into that budget and not dealt with here?
I, I'm sorry. So we put the Jaws of Life would go into the large borrow?
That is your premise, which I'm saying is I can't see how that works. You wouldn't, you wouldn't do a borrow till months and months and months later.
Well, that, that is the, that's the problem with this idea. I mean, that's one of the hangups, that then they wouldn't get the Jaws of Life that much later. So it was, it was an option that we saw that maybe was something to consider if we were putting a lot in that borrow. But you're right, then the Jaws of Life gets held up, you know? I did meet with the firehouse last night. And right now, their guesstimation is about six to eight million to build that house.
How much?
Six to eight million.
For a new firehouse?
But there's a lot, they didn't, you know, the architect was there. He was going to go back and try to get more specific numbers. But that's the range that they said I could throw out tonight. But it, so they might come back and be at 8,000, 8 million exactly, or it might come back and be closer to the six.
Does that include the trucks or just the firehouse?
That's just the firehouse.
So they're looking for eight million?
What number did you just do?
I said eight.
At least they, six to eight.
Well, again, it depends on what building materials they use and those kind of things. And the price of building materials is going up, so. But he wasn't in the position to work it all out. He said basically you'd go by square footage of a building of that size to get an estimate, you know, a general estimate if that's what you needed for the building.
So we would be asking the town for, check you fill in the number. 10?
10 million.
Seems to be 10 million we're asking the town for. At this game, that's what we're talking about.
All right, well, so the ARPA funds, we'd like to propose the, we spend this 245,000 and have you, Board of Finance, approve that so we can move towards a town meeting with that.
So I just don't understand why we're only taking 25,000 back from Park and Rec. That leaves them less than 15,000. They can't, if it costs them almost 40 to run a festival this year, why are we?
Well, the, the thought was.
What are they going to do with 10, 15?
The Selectmen were a little split on this, so, you know, we definitely all had a discussion about this. The thought was, there's a lot of feedback for Park and Rec, a lot of positive feedback from the, some of the merchants that were there. They thought it was wonderful, a lot of feedback. There was a lot of positive feedback for the event. The thought of next year would be to, which already was in the works, to cut it down to a one-day festival, which, you know, again, if they spent 35, if you got 15 for a one day, you could probably make that work. They realized they spent too much on entertainment. They spent over what they estimated on police. And so I think there was a lot of a learning curve this year as well. So we thought, again, we, the Board of Selectmen was a little split on this because, you know, that's a good point. And it was like, do we pull it all back or do we let them have a chance to have another one, one day? Learn from what they did and spend 15 on the second year.
And again, it may not even be 15 depending upon when all bills come in. They could have spent well over 40.
No, I don't think so.
You don't think so?
No. Mike was very, pretty good about, you know, the only bill he hadn't received yet was the police, which he thinks is going to be over 5,000. So again, it's up to the powers that be here that want to decide. But I personally thought it was a nice event and if it can be a one-day event, they'd cut down the number of bands and have it shorter and, you know, so they're working with tweaking it on their end before we even discuss pulling the money back and all this, so. So that was the problem, letting them keep the 15. Anything else you guys want to add?
As you mentioned, it was split. I was not in favor of extending it for a second year. I felt the money should come back. I was quite disappointed to see the overrun. And I felt it was, yes, the police expense ran over, but it was due to late planning on requesting the police expense. So it was a lack of controls overall of that. Right from the beginning, I had a different point of view on using it for the festival, so. That's there, but now that we've had one, I do believe that what is not spent should come back with the other monies and be applied to some of these other important financial undertakings we're facing.
To that point, if we were to pull more back from the festival, what's not on the list that could be funded? Do we have another project that didn't make this cut?
Well, even what's on here, we're severely underfunded for planning and zoning.
There was quite a list of other things that got kicked around before, public art and, yeah, the nest and pandemonium and all these other projects that have been on the list right along.
And I'm thinking about, all of a sudden, we've got a fountain on the list. It was never there. I mean, I realize it's only 4,000 dollars, but shouldn't that come out of general fund or something not from ARPA? If a fountain broke and needs to be fixed?
Well, that is your decision to make. We thought since we had the ARPA money, that it, it would be a more painless way, if you will, to get the fountain that's needed to be replaced, replaced. But again, you can take it out.
Because I'm worried that the 100,000, the transfer station's not going to be enough.
No, I don't think if we put more than, yeah, 2, 300,000, it's not enough.
Right.
I mean, we need a new compact. I mean, we need a new compact, we need a lot up there, so...
Board of Finance, what is your thoughts on the recommendations? Any enthusiasm?
Well, I will say the town approved a three-year music festival. So trying to keep the residents in mind, you know, Dwayne and I thought it was worth letting them try to have another year. And their goal was to ultimately get sponsorships to keep it going. And again, a couple of the merchants that were there were just... And, you know, the feedback I heard, I went and I was there, and I heard a lot of good feedback, so that's my take on that.
I would support giving the 15,000. You spent 10,000 extra this year, of next year's 25. You've got 15,000, do what you have to do. If you can do a smaller concert, do a smaller concert. But the 25 for year three, I would invite back. But the 15, you know...
You don't really have a choice of the 25, in a way, because they can't possibly get the contract signed by December. So that's kind of a given.
But my concern there, Jackie, was they spent 35 this year, and they have 40,000. Doesn't mean that they can go spend 40,000 on next year's concert. That's why I said, give them the 15, and give me the 25 back, because they went over this year.
Was there a reason why they went over $10,000?
Well, one of it, part of it was the police, as Carol just said, the police coverage. I don't think they estimated that properly.
I really think they didn't. I think there was some confusion that they might not need police if they held it at the park. They were going to hold it up to Veterans Green and close off Essex Street, and they were told they needed like four policemen, so they moved it to the park. Excuse me. And I think the idea was, they thought then they wouldn't need the police presence because they were contained, if you will. But it turned out they, our resident trooper decided they needed six troopers to be there. So... Which was great, kind of keep everyone safe, because no one knew, it was the first year. So there was a little, there was a learning curve on everybody, because, so that's just what happened. And I think Mike, our new Park and Rec director, did a great job, and he sort of picked it up when it was already three-quarters planned, and tried to add these components that weren't ever figured in, like the police, obviously could not have police, so...
So when they knew they were going over budget, what was done? Did they come to you and say?
They did. And I said, "Well, the event is happening in two weeks, so you have to make it work." So if that's what the police cost, that's what the police cost.
You know the band they had, which is the big draw on the second day at Max Creek? How much was that? I mean, there was probably a very well-known band and drew a lot of people.
And I signed all those checks, and I don't remember, so I don't want to just say...
Was that a lot more than, I can't read, a lot more than others?
Well, yeah, the Headliners always were expensive.
Yeah. Yes, just wondering what that might be.
But, you know, so there were things that added up that probably weren't ever in the calculation, like the bathrooms, they wanted more, you know, like just all these little things, and I think it just chipped away at it.
Not making excuses, but if you go back, when we originally gave them the money, we've changed administrations from Selectmen, we've changed Park and Rec's administration, we had a fill-in administration for Park and Rec, and then we hired a new person. So there's a lot of turnover on Park and Rec getting this, you know, getting this concert going. So not, then again, not making excuses, but that could have been some issues there.
Well, the entertainment itself, I believe, was 17,000. So I believe, you know, and then you added like 6,000 for the police, like you're already, you know, you're already very close, and they have a rented stage, sound system. So I think it just, they spent too much on entertainment. Because, and those were all already contracted before, I think they've firmed everything up with common needs needed to be placed.
Just didn't feel like there was good oversight on the whole process, and that's something I think we can learn from, and must learn from.
So it's up to you folks.
Carol, on the transfer station, that 100,000, what is that exactly going to do?
Well, we were trying to reconfigure the road, so we've met with the engineers twice, and they came up with a couple new configurations of the road, and the advisory committee really wanted the focus to be a little, they wanted the priorities to be a little different, and redesign the road maybe later. So then, we met with DPW and came up with, if you had 100,000, what are your priorities up here? We need to replace all our recycle, those big roll-offs, all have to be, you know, they're all kind of rusting out. We need new signage, all our signage is pretty faded out up there. The oil shed has to be replaced, it's leaking and kind of starting to rot. And that, you have a big bin in there, you know, the big rubber plastic thing for the oiler. So there's some thought about reconfiguring that, so that you don't have to step up on the little platform and reach up and over and pour in the oil, maybe sink it down or something, so maybe redesign that. So we came up with smaller things, the fence rail through along around the bulky waste was something that OSHA pointed out, and that has to be kind of a priority to get a new fence there. There's a rotted piece of fence up top by the compactor, or, you know... So while we chipped away at all the things that we could immediately just do to better it, you know, painting the building, the gutters in the back are failing, we came up with about $100,000 for those.
Historically, has the town ever considered closing their transfer center and offering trash pickup?
I know we've considered closing it and leasing it privately. We could look into private pickup.
I was just curious, over the years, Dwayne, you've probably been around the lines, has that ever been brought as a consideration?
Very, and we, Carol said, we talked about, or we explored very little about leasing up, letting a third party come in and run it.
So run station, but not actually shutting it down and offering trash pickup.
But these meetings are occurring on a regular basis, and if you have interest in them, they would welcome attendance as an audience of citizens, and that could be an idea you could propose. But where we are now, with this transfer station still needing to operate, that isn't a plan that's underway. And the $100,000 will cover the engineering costs, the road changing, and a few other items that may run over that. So that is, that is what's on the table now, is this list of ARPA items. And what we're asking you to do is to approve this list to go to a town meeting, so that that can be voted on. That is, that's the issue at hand now.
Let's not lose sight of a big problem here at the transfer station. We still need to cap it.
And people not, or not from our town using the transfer station?
That has cracked down Carmelo, but cap in it, this was supposed to be capped a long time ago.
And that, the $100,000 doesn't address capping it, does it?
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying the big picture here, that it's a big ticket item. We went out for a grant to get a half a million dollars back, and we're trying to get another grant for another half a million. Because that 600,000 dollar project is now well over a million dollar project.
So... I'm doing Carmelo. A big problem is this, it is being used by others. Which is what the reconfiguration was going to do, at least that's what the conversation was.
This committee is working hard, as Catherine pointed out, like they're meeting every Monday. Tomorrow, two of them are going up to the transfer station. They've been spending a lot of time up there checking stickers. We have a new employee up there, started yesterday. So I suggested if they wanted to go up there tomorrow, that would be wonderful, they can stand with a new employee and help them learn how to check stickers.
So is the committee that is holding up, somehow minimizing the use of out-of-towners? Is that what we're, your offer? This committee is not in agreement with redesigning the road to help keep others out?
I don't think that's the case at all. The committee is underway. They didn't like the latest proposal of the turnaround, that's all. So then they thought maybe reprioritize, enforce the stickers a little better, to see if that helps, better signage, so... But redesigning the road is still on the table, it's just, when you and I spoke, you really wanted how we were spending the 100,000, we wanted more detail. So instead of saying the road, because we still haven't come up with what everyone agrees with, I went to the DPW, and we talked about a lot of the issues up there, what is needed. And so we can spend the 100,000 on these concrete things, which are new recycle bins that are rusting out. So they're not things that we don't need, they're things we need.
So Carol, would you still then need another 100,000 plus to do the road?
Maybe once we agree, and if that's what we're doing, yeah.
Overrunning out of time.
I think what Carol's suggesting is because we don't have agreement on the road from the committee and a firm final design from the engineering firm, that these are a list of additional items that need replacement at the transfer station, to spend it on that. And then when you get the finalized design, and with the engineering, and approved by the committee, and all the powers that be, that will have to be funded in another way.
We're trying to move the ARPA funds forward, because we're running out of time. So I still bring you that we'd like to spend $100,000 at the transfer station, and move that up forward to a town meeting, along with all these other expenditures.
Board of Finance, any thoughts? Do you wish to move forward with the recommendations from the Selectmen?
Is it all, or is all the items on the list need to be inclusive, or do we have any additional thoughts?
That's your total leftover, you've used everything, right?
So that would be everything?
We came up with what we thought were all prior wonderful projects, and we added them up to 245, which...
And you're claiming zoning as the balancing factor.
They have 42, and then if you all agreed, Jaws of Life maybe could wait, you put it in the bond, then planning and zoning, and we'll get any extra that would...
I don't see any way it could go into the bond. So if we're going to give it to the fire department, we're going to give it to, in the remaining six months, five months in the month, year.
Okay, well, that's for you to all decide.
Just to refresh my memory on the payloader, at the, where it works, did we approve something for that?
We approved? No, we certainly talked about it, and I must admit, that was the one that I was hoping would go.
I'm wondering where we are with that plan.
Well, we briefly mentioned bringing that up, but that basically takes up most of the money, because it's up to, we thought it was around 170 or 165 or something. We didn't have the exact number.
What if we did the payloader, and the blower, and the, what does that come up, and the Jaws of Life? Payloader you're saying is 175, 15?
Yeah, but what about the transfer station?
What's that?
I thought the payloader was like 240 or 250.
Oh, there was two, I actually thought it was two, but 175 and two are pretty close, so I was accepting it, so, yeah, two?
I guess I'm just worried that sounded like it was on its last legs.
I understand it can't run.
It's like the backbone of our time.
Jaws of Life.
Initially, 300, and now it's like 240, 250.
Is when our budget... It's budgeting our fire plan.
Those are your notes from the meeting?
If we don't pay for the payloader out of these funds, we have to ask the county to pay for it. Thoughts, anyone?
What I've heard from the townspeople over the years was that the transfer station needs to be addressed. Entrance to the transfer station, use of the transfer station, restricting people who are now from Deep River to use it. So maybe a lot of the intensity of the money needs to be directed to redesigning that road, getting that to a place with gates maybe, or with a booth where somebody sits in the booth and says, "Show me your sticker, you can go in." Don't have a sticker, I mean, that's simplistic, but I think that's something that is germane to the entire town.
No, I agree. I would put that almost number one, but I don't know how to do it. We're saying now that, I'm not sure what we're saying. We're saying, is the road reconstruction still a potential?
Yes, it is.
When would we know what it is and what it will cost? Here we are in August.
And this money has to be used by one, dedicated by one?
Has to be signed contracts by Jan, December.
Can we have a road designed and an estimate from Jacobson in the next six weeks?
Oh, I'm sure, he can give me an estimate of what he designed, but just the committee, what I said, was kind of not really thrilled with that. So then I thought we were going back to the joint board for it. But in order to justify the 100,000, I found another 100,000 of items to spend, so that we could move this forward and at least plan a town meeting for 100,000 for the transfer station. So, but we can certainly, I can certainly, we get the number, because he was pleased to give me the number, but then the transfer station advisor came in and said, "No, we don't like that." So then I, you know, every time he works up numbers, he charges the town, so it was like, okay, stop working on that right now until we get these people on board, you know.
I'm not sure I'm capable of deciding whether we should paint the transfer station or buy a new payloader. I'm not sure I'm capable of that. I lean towards the payloader.
Well, the payloader, Eric did just text and...
Between 250 and 275.
How much do we have? We have 245.
We have 245.
25?
If we take back the 25 from Park and Rec.
Right, if you take back that at 15, then...
You have 260, Tom.
260.
260, yeah.
But it still doesn't get to a payload if it's 275.
Board of Finance, comments? I wanted to take back, start a conversation, I wanted to take back the 15 by payloader, just to start a conversation.
And that would be the only item on the ARPA list, then?
It appears that way. It appears that way. And you've spent a million something, yeah, that's what's left.
You know, I mean, there's a lot of thought the Board of Selectmen gave to this, and we would like some things to be long-term and lasting. And we heard what the public said about the transfer station being a priority.
Correct.
And we know that's serious, so we want to do that. All of economic development has been shrunk down now to about $20,000. And we would like to see that kept, we'd like to see the signage, we'd like to see something developed out of that, something that would sit there, that would hopefully draw some interest, not be consumed in a weekend or in a couple of months, but would sit there for many years. And planning and zoning, we have not given them the tools to be able to do any of the planning under which all the forward thinking of the design of the town would sit. So, yes, we have a lot of serious needs, and I've spoken with the other Selectmen about many of the other serious needs that we have funded as we all went through this budget process. I would not feel comfortable with taking all this money and doing a payloader. Let's have something come out of this that is slightly visionary.
I agree. I think what I'm saying, the only is, is all of a sudden the leaf blower and the fountain, they're not even on the capital project, so, but it's only 20,000 dollars. Like, where did that come from?
I think it was, that was the riding blower. It's on there somewhere.
It came up last month, but I don't know if it was prior to that.
When we went back to our last discussion, we took into consideration and talked about the seriousness of everything we went through with the budget, how underfunded we are for capital investments. We talked about all that, we looked to see, are there a few immediate things that we can address with this while still keeping a bit of long-term thinking? And that is the list we came up with after two hours thorough discussion.
That's why we put the leaf blower in there, the fountain, and the extraction tool, because we said those are the capital things. Then to address some of the long-term things that we want to see, the EDC, the planning and zoning piece, and we really feel, you know, the Board of Selectmen really feels those should be in there. We don't want to just put it all in capital and wipe it away. But we understand there's a need for a payloader, I mean, it's leaking oil and it needs to be replaced.
Board of Finance, what do you find, you have to say yea or nay to move this forward? You have to say yea or nay to move this forward. Your thoughts, what do you think? Are you willing to accept their proposal?
I am. As I say, I struggle with those two items, but if they're important and you feel that they should be there.
That is the
I mean, I think we have to address the payloader at some point, but I don't think we should, at this point, when we had one point three million and we only have two hundred thousand left, I think the dump has to be a priority.
I agree, I agree the dump has to be a priority, I'm a little uncomfortable that it's not the restructuring of the road, but
Can that be changed? I mean, I agree with Carmella.
It can be.
It needs to be changed.
The Board of Selectmen can override our advisory committee.
Just do it. The road needs to be fixed, so do it.
It's an investment, and we hear the townspeople, this is what they want, it's an investment, it's costing us more money. We don't know how many people are spending or dumping, I'm sure it costs a lot.
Correct.
We don't know the number.
Certainly, as people know, I agree, yes.
I think I made a proposal about a year ago to invest some money on overtime and put the cop up there on Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday for one to two weeks and we'll take care of that problem real quick.
What's the word, is that?
Well, I mean, they don't respect, they don't respect the gentlemen that work up there, but they're going to respect an officer with a badge.
That's correct.
And if they take none, then we'll control, we'll control our dump, our transfer station. You know, our long-lost selectman here, Dick would sit up there every Saturday, Sunday.
He'd sit up there about seven?
No, and he would be sitting there running market plates. Well, I mean, we laugh about it, but it's
Carol, didn't you ask for them to do that and they told you they weren't going to enforce the licenses?
Yeah.
Right. Who's then?
The police.
Police, police department.
What do you mean they weren't enforcing?
They don't enforce town licenses.
They can, they can enforce town licenses.
But we have them set up there, they may not do anything, they sit there, experience, because people assume they're getting their license plates run.
It's a temporary fix and it's invasive to the townspeople, let's do a permanent fix to a permanent problem.
I just don't think it's enough time, right?
This money, we can vote for the money, can we?
So spend the money for the transfer station, but instead of fixing the payloaders and the oil thing and whatnot, the money has to be spent on controlling the entrance and exit to the transfer station, to the road, period. So the committee needs to coalesce and get their decision made and it has to be done before the money has to be appropriated in December.
Has to be quick, I mean, we're going to have to bid most of that out and we're going to sign contracts, so you're absolutely correct. All right, so I say the selectmen who are elected to lead this town and come up to a recommendation how they want to use the remaining funds. Jackie has agreed to first that.
So I make a motion that we support the selectmen's recommendations on how to spend the rest of the ARPA money.
And the, with Carmella's condition that it is going to the town transfer station for roads.
Well, in there, a hundred thousand.
Yeah, but it's not directed to the road, it's directed
That's not my motion.
To auxiliary things.
That you're not
That's not my motion. My motion is to approve it as it is.
As you heard it.
Yes, and the reason I say that, if you want me to clarify, is what if they can't come up with a solution for the roads and we can't get it bid out? Then we've got to go back to the town to say, you approved it for roads only, but we can't get it done and we're going to lose this money. So I think we have to trust the process and let Carol work with this committee, and any one of us can be on this committee if we want to give our opinions, to come up with a process and assume that Carol is going to guide them with, you know, what's important to the townspeople, what she's heard is that we want to keep outsiders out of the transfer station. So whatever they come up with on spending this money should include making sure that we have some permanent solution for that.
Yeah.
But I don't think we should tie their hands, so my motion doesn't include that.
Although there's an asterisk.
Yes.
There's an asterisk, okay. All right, I got it first, do I have a second, anybody? Port Finance, select the, agree with the, move the selectmen's recommendation, do I have a second? All right, silence?
If you don't, and we don't have a meeting next month, we're going to lose this money, guys.
We do not have a meeting, although special meetings are special, so, all right, hearing, no second?
Well, I second the motion, but it's now open to discussion and then a vote.
Yes.
So I second the motion.
Second, and we can open it for discussion, all right, before we vote. All right, Port Finance, what is your thoughts on the recommendations of the selectmen?
And what don't you want on here, or are you just
I think for me, there's a lack of detail on what that plan looks like. I mean, you know, we didn't have a piece of paper that doesn't quite outline what that looks like.
For the transfer station?
I'm speaking of the transfer station. So how do we know that that's what it costs? It could cost more, it could cost less. So I don't want to lose money because maybe we don't spend the hundred, now there's another fifty that we're scrambling, but we've got approval to spend it. So I think that's where I'm a little uncomfortable, is the lack of details.
And I think we all are, I am as well, but I'm assuming that as you have the details, you'll come back and present them to us.
Which takes us to September, because we don't have a meeting in August.
But says we have a special meeting.
Well, we don't need to, do we? If we approve this tonight, coastal town meeting in, fill in the date, August, bid it out in September, November, you should be able to do it, and we should know.
I do have a drawing in my office at the NACI of the road.
Well, I was thinking of all the items you mentioned that need to get addressed, which I think is important.
Those were items because I didn't have a figure for the road. And I, we'd like to move this forward because the Board of Selectmen has met probably six times about this ARPA thing. And you guys do a great job, but every time you voted us down, lock, stock and barrel, and then we have to go back to the drawing board. So maybe we should have said, pick out two items that you agree with and so we can move that forward or something. So I just put the hundred thousand, we've agreed on a hundred thousand over the months, but if you needed real detail, I came to you with a real detail of how to spend a hundred thousand. Ultimately, I would like to reconfigure the road, but you're right, I don't know if we even have enough to reconfigure the road for a hundred thousand.
Plus those other items you mentioned.
Yeah, well, the other items were because I said, if I have a hundred thousand to spend and we're not doing the road, what do you need up here, what's the priority? And it was like boom, 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 you know, it was easy to give me a hundred thousand dollars for the stuff.
So would it help if you had additional monies in that bucket?
Of course, I mean, Eric said I could spend two hundred thousand at the transfer station, you know, if I had it.
So what I'm thinking of is, not that I'm against the fountain, but you take the fountain money and I don't, I wasn't in the last meeting when you discussed the blower, but those items and you take that budget and you move it over to that transfer center priorities, because it sounds like you've identified some significant priorities. And again, I wasn't at the last meeting, maybe these things were discussed, but based on what you shared with us tonight, it's a concern, the transfer center, so I'm supportive of it, just want to make sure you have enough money and
Yes, I understand, and we went through a cemetery, just came up with, that could definitely be our capital expense, or they could try fundraising, they offered, they actually approached me and said, would the town be able to pay half if we came up with half? So that's, but again, we had ARPA money that we thought, well, this would be a great thing, I mean, we pointed out in our budget every year, we give thirty-five thousand to Fountain Hill, so we should be giving something to Wintrop Cemetery, so there was some thought there too.
I think we're mandated to give the thirty-five to Fountain Hill.
Yeah, the thirty-five, because they were going bankrupt.
Right, and the state requires
State law says you have to chip in, so we get reached to compromise if they needed, so that's correct. We will eventually get that cemetery, so
Carol, will the engineering group be able to get a design we like, how much that will cost to do?
He, when I emailed him on Friday or Thursday, and when he sent me that latest design, he said, I said, can you get me a number by Tuesday? And he said, if your group tells me they like it, sure, I can write it up. And so then when the group said last night at their meeting, they held it up, I did reach out to Jacobson because I didn't want to get charged for something if I already knew people were against it. But I can certainly call and say, work up some numbers. So that's fine, I'll pursue it, I kind of, I like the idea, so I like the design.
So in order to go with what you said about redirecting the money, you have to defeat your motion and rewrite this distribution of funds.
That we're putting a hundred and twenty thousand towards, is what you're suggesting.
Based on what you've shared with us, I think that money would be better spent at the transfer station.
One nineteen, right, one nineteen.
Unless there was a good, I didn't know the other, you know, the fountain, but you know, the blower, I wasn't here, I don't know if there was something that I'd missed.
Well, the blower, they came at the end of last budget, it was in his capital request, and he asked if, because he didn't go over his line item for his budget. And then it was voted down, but it's something he needs, something that Osha was, she was a little more favor, favoring that kind of apparatus because the guys were on the road a little longer and she would have liked to see without proper conage and, you know, those kind of things. And then they have the ear things, ear protection, so give it away of traffic and, an apparatus like this will get them off the road faster, so.
And so it's on record, Carol, they could have bought it, purchased it last month for ten thousand dollars, because the manufacturer was running a special, so that ten thousand went up to fourteen thousand. So as far as I'm concerned, we wasted four thousand dollars if we purchase it.
All right, Port Finance, we're hanging, staring. I've got it first, I got a second, I've got discussion. Time for a vote, anyone wish to add anymore? All right, we've got, we're going to vote on the recommendations currently presented to us by the selectmen. All those in favor of accepting the, approving the selectmen's recommendation and sending them to a town meeting, please say aye.
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 But I'm also supporting a little reworking, but yes, right down.
So I got one.
Can we hear more? I mean, I haven't heard from Mike, because maybe it's not my place to ask this, but I'd like to hear more rather than just voting it down. Can you help us shape this to something else, please?
Mike, what are your thoughts on the jaws of life and the dump?
Those are your priorities?
Those are the priorities, Mike and
What about you, Cindy? I'm absolutely with the jaws of life and the dump, but more specifically, as I said before, kind of mitigating the cost of people from out of town coming in and dumping their stuff there. We're paying for it, and what's the tipping fee?
It's going to go up.
It's huge, so let's invest in that and save money. So I, I'm not all for the Board of Finance believing directing line items, but I think it's worth the conversation because that's what we're hearing over and over from the townspeople. So it was a like and road specifically, the transfer station, is what I would vote.
So to restructure your recommendations and how would it reach to get an approval? To get a vote on it that's successful?
I mean, we could do this tonight, right?
So if you're taking off the leaf bar and Wintrop Cemetery, so that's eighteen thousand, you're going to add that to the transfer station, one eighteen?
It hurts to take mine as only?
I just ask, if this finance is bored to micromanage the decisions that's come out of the Board of Finance? I mean, unless you're really objecting in some major way, it seems to me that the Board of Selectmen has made a recommendation, your job is, unless there's something wrong with moving the money, is now to make, take this to the town where the townspeople vote on it. By doing what you're doing here, you're actually taking these issues away from the town having a vote on this. So much as I respect all of you, and I get into micromanaging details myself because it's at the decimal point, I'm just wondering if we are doing the right thing with this process. We've now given this tremendous amount of thought and we'd like to see it moved to a town meeting.
Well, I guess I want to push back, the decision-making ARPA setup is you use the same decision-making process used for everything. Where selectmen has made a recommendation to Board of Finance, who is not in agreement. Why, I can follow your frustration, but that's the decision-making process the town uses and we should use for this.
So if you use it for this, now you're coming back with something, I think it's, I don't know if we're prepared to decide on the spot that we divide it up to two things, I'm certainly not. So whatever you then come up with, we need to go back and discuss and we need to do this all over again, which is fine, we can do it two, three more times. We want to do the right thing with it.
We're also waiting for that guy to get back to you too, right? Have you been emailing, been emailing him, right, and he hasn't gotten back to you?
Who are we talking?
The engineer, no.
The engineer, I thought last meeting you said you sent him some emails and you're waiting for a number slot.
Yeah, we've had a lot of communications, we've met at the transfer station a few times, yeah, no.
My reading of Board of Finance, they want that, they give a high priority to the road, the transfer station, and this recommendation doesn't quite get there yet. And we would like to see detail, Carol's request is a very valid one. What do we get for a hundred thousand dollars, other than a concept?
So if it's pending more detail, which Carol's going to ask for from the engineer, then I think we're going to need a call at that meeting for us to address this. I don't, I don't think it's
Let's go back with town road, are we putting jaws of life in there, jaws of life in there? So you've got two items which could clean you out, depending upon numbers, then we could certainly in September buy a fountain, if we find we need
Let me also ask, we said we
And buy a blower.
At the, at the public hearing on the budget, that any group could come back and see what is available in general funds. Where are we on general funds? Have we got anything that can cover?
We should have a good idea, well, we'll go over to
Jaws of life.
We should be pretty well, with this budget, there'll be a surplus, we'll have a much better number, I believe, in August for our September meeting.
So with that regard, you may have the monies then in your general funds as things have aligned with the final payments to cover jaws of life?
As possible. Not the possibles, question here is how should we spend ARPA?
So I think if we go back and think back the way in the beginning, is we agreed to spend like twenty-five percent, I don't have an exact number, like fifty percent on capital, twenty-five percent on social and twenty-five percent on economic development.
Correct.
So the only economic development we have is this money here. So we're talking about jaws of life and the transfer station. Are we not supportive of the master plan and
Well, that's true, so somebody tried to spend on the music fest, but now we're taking fifty, twenty-five of that back, so in your, the three categories that you said, so that's even less than the whole economic development in that overall scheme of economy spend.
And that's what the town originally supported and voted on way, way back, two-plus years ago.
But we still have a whole problem, we don't know how much it can affect.
Yes, I agree.
But it's, I think it's really imperative, the planning and zoning piece and this tourism piece. You know, again, at the town meetings that we had where people presented the ARPA thing, they were all well received. I mean, it seems like the residents really want something to come out of this besides capital expenditures, because, and yet we need them and they all know we need them, but we need something to show for this besides a new ride on mowark or something, you know, for the better of the town, long-range planning.
Board of Finance, any thoughts? I shall boldly go that while that is a noble statement, when people get a tax bill for a new payloader, they will find that far more interesting, reducing capital. My opinion, I speak only for myself. Port Finance, thoughts? Eric, it did not pass? And I think we need to bring it back soon so we can do that road, that is what's holding this up, how much road we, and one of the things that could get that road up is we eliminate fountains and riding blower. That road is what will hold us up.
Can we make another motion to part of that forward?
To that, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, we can do that.
So I would like to make a motion that we move it forward, moving the, that's eighteen thousand, I think, or was it twenty?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, into the transfer center project.
And the fountain, too?
Well, that would include the fountain and the blower, the budgeted amount into the transfer project, and everything else stays as is.
Is the selectmen willing to get a recommendation from the Board of Finance?
So basically, taking just two of those items.
The top two items, 18,000, putting it into transfer station, leave it at 65. Jaws of life, 20,000, Jerry Roberts, 42 for planning and zoning.
Everything else would stay the same, that's my motion on the table.
And what would you do with that? You would take it to the, you would take this number to a town meeting?
I think we should take it to the number for the road, we have one more session, push it to the special meeting. Don't keep it this way. So as long as we sign the contracts, we're gonna have a fine for it.
I would just like to see something executed out of this.
Right.
Something.
If this board approved it and our Carol's recommendation, we could go to a town meeting in August, move forward. Selectmen willing to, our, our vote would be a, what would our vote, would it be binding? Do you have to change yours? How do you want to play this process?
The Board of Selectmen's not, not ready to agree with your recommendation at this point. We'd like to meet again and then have you call a special meeting so we can meet with you.
Like to try to get some solid numbers from the, from the engineer.
Come back with solid numbers with that road look like, maybe it's affordable, it's not, but we'll know at that point.
So you're leaving your proposal as is, we'll meet to, meet again in August?
Yes.
With a different set of numbers?
Maybe we can meet soon.
Yeah, I mean, if I get numbers, then we can meet sooner. And we'll, as of course, selectmen will meet.
Well done, cool, excellent. All right, the next item on the agenda with Dick Laken was going to share with us his work and, his work and thoughts on Oak Ridge Drive and the Town Hall mold. Carol, set that conversation up. Oak Ridge, if you remember, there is massive water problems in a private residence on private ground, but it is affecting the town road. What Dick wants to do is be, set up a situation where he has a contractor under his control that handles the entire issue, all right? My conversations with him the other day, which he then changed. So we will go as follows. He told me this number should be about, he's looking for us to authorize about $85,000, of which approximately half of that would be reimbursed by the town, the owner of the property. He then went back to Carol's point. I guess the town, his directions went to have the, whatever the solution is run on the right side of the house and the homeowner wants it on the left side of the house. It's possible I got those confused. But anyhow, we're changing where the solution is. He is going back to the contractors to see if that changes. His assumption is it does, but he is not here and we would have to go to a town meeting on that. So I guess we're going to have to hold that in advance as well. Town Hall mold, what he wants to do is immediately get Service Master, did I have that term correct, in here to clean up the basement and I believe certain parts of Town Hall. He has a bid to do that for $38,000. I would recommend we take that out of Town Hall buildings, which we have about $50,000 in. That does not mean we will not have to revisit that line later in the year. But this would give him the ability to begin the cleanup immediately. There's no action on our part, if you were tolerant of the story I just told. They have to take no action. But we could get that, we could begin to get the mold cleanup. We haven't dealt with the issue, we just have cleaned it up.
What's the source?
Carol, do you know, I mean, it is water in the basement that is closing.
I think there's multiple sources, but they haven't been identified. We have an open, you know, cooling tower that's kind of split, so we have an open bucket of water downstairs, if you will, very large container, that gets filled up when they turn on the AC. And then that, you know, absorbs, you know, gets evaporated air, yeah. And then just with all the rain we had, like everyone else, there was a lot more water in the basement. Not really standing water, so I think it seeps either up or through the walls. I was down there yesterday with the architect and then he said, there's really no way to know. I mean, we don't have anything sealed and it's such an old building. There might be some sort of membrane on the outside, but you don't know that unless you dig down and expose some of the foundation. So I don't know if that's worth doing a test hole to find out. There's a lot of products that you can seal from the inside, maybe not as well, so. So I don't think we've really identified the source, but there's probably multiple sources because it's such an old building, so.
Would there be any grant money to fix it?
Pardon me?
Would there be like grant money available if it's a foundation repair?
Uh, well, I don't think it's a repair necessarily, it's kind of a, you know, you put up some sort of barrier. And again, those are chemicals that paint on or spray paint on. But I am gonna try to get some grant money for that.
We've started to talk about grant money and people have identified grant money. The weakness in the grant money is it is generally front-end, not back-end. The other conversation is this may be covered by insurance. But you should not put any hope in, I'm not suggesting you put too much hope in either case, but everyone else, people are looking at it.
And remember, some of the grants, you know, you have to put up 20% upfront or you have to do a matching or something like that. So there will be a point where we're gonna, the Board of Selectmen will come back for dollars.
Immediately, that's correct.
Carol, just for education, this problem just didn't happen, black mold didn't just occur.
No, and I don't believe we have any black mold downstairs, it was other types of mold. I have the report in there, it's the spores that they found, but there really wasn't black mold. There was a couple on pieces of paper that were, you could see the mold, but it was picked up. You know, there's no standard for mold, we're choosing one over each comment right now. They just compare ambient outside air to inside air. So the two, the two hotspots were basically where the EOC room is, but there's carpet in there, so that absorbs a lot. And right in front of the vault on some of the papers, that was the other high, those were the two high numbers. And in my, outside my office, there was higher than outside air, but not off the chart numbers. But a lot of the papers downstairs that they took pictures of that had mold on, we're gonna get rid of those papers. So the cleanup in the basement's gonna go pretty fast, I think. Because unlike the school, we are cleaning computers and everything that has to stay. Most of the items down there, with the exception of some of the files that can't be disposed of, we can get it up. It's just a matter of having trained personnel hauling the stuff out, like we can't do ourselves, we have to.
Do you get people with white suits and everything that come in?
The source of the moisture has to be discovered, right? Where is this water coming from that's creating whatever kind of mold it's there?
Right, well, once the basement's empty, then they do a thorough cleanup. And then at that time, if there's any water seeping in, again, I'm not an expert, it's just my environmental background, this is what would probably happen, they'd clean it all out and then do any kind of mitigation or remediation at that time if they see actual, you know, actual seepage of water. But right in Chester, where we're down, a lot of just dampness coming up through the floor. We have a couple of cracks in the cement slab on the floor, so probably have to be resealed.
So a dehumidifier down there or a system?
We'd have to get a dehumidifier, kind of probably a better system, we have one standalone, but probably a couple of big commercial units would have to be in there. Reban the air conditioning system perhaps, so at least cover that bin that's down there.
And the $38,000 is to what, wood materials?
I think that's just the initial cleanup, we have to totally empty the basement.
So it has nothing to do with stopping the mold other than getting rid of stuff that is already molded?
No, that's correct.
So there's gonna be more expense besides the $38,000?
Oh yes, you should expect this one to be fairly low.
To what kind of a number? Hundred thousand, two hundred thousand?
It is better that the conversations I've had, I do not participate with you. But a hundred would be good, I mean, the job may.
So we have a lot of yet unseen expenses coming at this budget we prepared from last year for this year?
Yes. He's got the conversations I've had, but we shall sit, as Carol is not saying that, people are still looking for stuff, so.
Well, I think once everything's out of the basement and then you have a clean slate, you'll really get a good sense of, you know, where we have some, you know, stuff coming off the brick, you know, like where brick is delineating, kind of the surfacing coming off and stuff like that. You know that that's a moisture area, those are dry, you know. You're the mold guy from John and Thrup, what do you think?
It's pricey. Carol just gave us, you went to a meeting the other day on the firehouse and fire trucks. I think you're giving us, you're leaning towards a number of about $10 million, right? Maybe we should deal in August during our free time getting one.
Yeah, just for clarification, the meeting was only about the firehouse design?
Well, Anne Marie had from, I think Tim gave her numbers of what, 1.5 for a fire truck and the 200 for the second truck, so.
Yes.
Catch you quickly, Tim. All right, shall we, in our few moments, we have, you were sent two budgets. I think I'm exaggerating. You were sent the budget that ended in June 30th, 2024. And you were sent only the revenues for the budget began in July. And we can go through both of them. I'm going to suggest to you that we do not. I suggest that we will do it, let's see, we can do it on a large, oh, picture. There is nothing particularly new, I'm trying to find it here, particularly new in the budget that ended June 30. It still needs a lot of work, see if I can open it up. I'm going to take you all the way to the bottom line of that budget, which would give you the indication that of the 20 million, is that our budget, current expenditures? 19 million, 19307 for that budget, we did not spend a little over a million dollars. However, if we were to go back into the detail, there is still several large items that have not come in. And if you would like to, we can go through it in great, in more detail. But as you glance at the budget, you will see that there are lots of lines that were not fully spent. Let's just take a moment and celebrate the selectmen line. The selectmen line, we budgeted 4064, you see that we spent 397. The reason I bring it up is, A, it's the first item. And we did not anticipate the change in our accounting staff. We found during the year we had to incur, and you see the number there, a little over $53,000. So even with incurring the non-budgeted item, we still have about 8.5 remaining.
Was that the kid or the person that was helping Anne Marie?
Yes.
And he was from Mahoney Sable?
Uh, no, no, this was a woman who was the, that number is, no, let me change, let's go with yes. The woman who was the finance director in Essex worked with us and was at the school, she worked with us. She was the main cost. In addition to that, there was a fellow from Mahoney Sable that we had to bring back to do some, so. Most of it is her number. So yes. Let's go, Town Hall operations, and I said I wasn't gonna make this law. Like us, Town Hall operations, there's water, electricity, fuels. Like us, you incur, you use electricity, you use water and get billed subsequently. You have not received all those bills, telephone being another cat. So while there's 13.5 left, I imagine, they will not go over, but I do anticipate that that 13 is too high, all right? And let's see if we can shoot through, Town Clerk is fine. Planning and zoning is, it's probably a good number, zoning's good. A building and facial, way over, $44,000 over. But remember, when we budgeted, we did not assume he would be working at the school. He has reimbursed from the school, so on the revenue side, we will see substantial amounts of income. Let's take you down to special services. You will see that special services is over budget. And that is driven by, Carol, how do you want to say it? Dogs, animal concerns, just to be consistent there. What is the total number, one contingency, 27, something like that? So.
So we're hoping to get some of the dog expense back.
How are we gonna, you explained this to me, how do you get the expense back?
We have to put a lien on our house.
And that's true, again, that is not going to change these numbers, we still spent them. Somewhere within the next 15 years, we'll get some money back, but, correct. Let's see, let's go, I want to, there's a couple here that I wish to bring to your attention. I wish to bring to your attention the assessor. You will note that the assessor has been over expended by $3.84,000. It was explained to me, it's been explained, it's been hinted at, and not in the word hinted, it was not me that said it. The number that has been used to produce the assessor's salary for the last couple of years in this budget has not been correct. I'm going to hint to you that if you're tolerant, let's put off assessor. I think there, there's going to be some focus we need to put in the assessor's budget in total. Floyd Ben, Floyd benefits, we did not anticipate several people leaving, therefore that number is, drove us high. Which one do I, I'm trying to just catch the big ones here. There is highway department. If you'll note, highway department's under budget by $433,4,000. But if you glance above, there's substantial dollars left in general funds and town road aids. There were contracts put out for, in the prior fiscal year, that will be spent in the next couple of months. So a substantial amount of those dollars will be leaving.
Can you go back to police?
Certainly.
$190,000?
Police is one I should have stuck for perfect. You will note.
Is that going to be spent?
Uh, you will note, remember, we have a couple, we did not spend all the officer time. You'll note that the big number, the resident trooper, has not yet been billed by state. So that number will go down, as will that confusion in there with the overtime. That number will come out of there, if you remember, we've set up a different fund, so that will come out of our final budget.
But.
Yes. Is there a question?
Yes, on the contingency fund in general fund?
Yes, yes.
It's over by $27,000?
Yes.
What was that for?
Carol's dogs.
The dogs and also Oak Ridge Drive, some of that got put there. It got put in highway, but it also got put here.
So the dogs are in the dog collar and everything?
And both of them are scattered, and there's some logical reasons why to put some of the, in the dog transfers line and some here.
So it was the dogs, anyone else?
Some of the Oak Ridge Drive drainage issue got put in. If you put up people, if a building, I don't know, say, building code forces people out of their house, like a big recor, not violation, but enforcement, then by statute, we're required to pay out to, I think it's 4,000 a person to put them up. So we are out $8,000. So that won't be recouped, but the difference of what we put out there, it should be able to be recouped ultimately by putting a lien.
Easy to, if you clean the house, something like that, arguably, we could put a lien on there.
Right, for that total. So once I get the total from Anne Marie, from Service Master and all the dog costs, then we'll go to the town meeting and have her file a lien on the property. So, okay, the house is sold or whatever, okay.
And Carol's captured, if and when the house is sold, that's when we would get it, but you will not see it soon. Waste removal, you will see there's $93,000, $94,000 surplus. There is still, I believe, quite a few dollars that are outstanding there. I believe, is the wood chipper still going on up there? And I don't think you've received the tipping fees for this month either. There will be a surplus, but I don't think it was the magnitude that you're looking at. And so, okay. Let's get back to the bottom line, which indicates at this moment with these numbers, there's about a million unspent, which is good, except I do believe you're going- there's about a million unspent, which is good, except I do believe you're going to see about four hundred thousand dollars of that reduced, that the costs that are not currently reflected correctly. So I'm thinking we will come, we will underspent a, it was a twenty million, nineteen million, by about five hundred, four hundred, five or a thousand dollars, and that is worthy of celebrating. If you go all the way further down, you will see revenues. Revenues currently, we have collected a hundred and eighty-eight, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars revenues in excess of what we were budgeting, and I still believe there is some there. It's not only WPCA has paid us, nor has the school paid us. So, so again, I, my estimate is we're going to see a surplus, underspent four hundred revenues, two hundred, so five, six hundred thousand dollar surplus. Which goes to Catherine's question, there should be dollars left over. We will, we will both celebrate dollars left over, decide whether we wish to spend them. There was a rush to spend them last time. And I'll tell you what, let's just glance at, and again, let's, let's decide whether you want to celebrate. Tom set us up. There is the revenues for the two thousand, the new budget that we're just beginning. Let's look at the first line. We have collected about three point five million dollars of the seventeen million dollars in property taxes. As Tom has hinted, and I have got the same answer from people, it is, now, Tom actually leaned into positive. I was getting, it's about what we received last year in the revenue, so, but it is good. Revenues are coming in strong. I have nothing more to answer that one. Anyone have any concerns, any thoughts that should be discussed?
I just have a question on, in general, the way the budget is, we budget items. If we, simplistically, if you budget, say, a hundred dollars, just to use a figure, for a department, and the department goes, instead spends two hundred and fifty dollars instead of their one hundred dollar budget, what's the process in there for that over expenditure? Is there a process? Do, does the department come to the selectman and say, we need a hundred and fifty dollars more? Do you approve it, or does the department go ahead and just spend the money and say, okay, we went over budget, so you guys deal with it, in your next budget, you have to make up the terms for us?
Let's take it a, from a theoretical, we did not drop by the fire department. Fire departments overspent their equipment by twenty thousand dollars, over twenty thousand dollars.
But that isn't my question, the question is how does that proceed?
My question, I think your question is, why was that paid? Their argument is, I had to deal with my equipment, okay. Why didn't they come in to tell us? And they sort of handed it out, same is true with expenditures. I don't know what's going to happen with fire department, we may have to go to a town, I don't know, I've talked to the owners. Your question is good, and one of the things that frustrates me, how can you spend, overspend the budget?
Right, if you're given an amount of money to spend, that's what you spend. Unless there's some extraordinary example, something comes up and you need more money, do you go to the board of finance, do you go to the board of selectmen, do you go to the treasurer? Where do you get that money from? Or do you just spend it and then say, okay, fix it for me, I need more money?
I think your frustrating answer seems to be the right one.
Wasn't the purchasing order system part of our parking lot discussion? Anne Marie was going to try to establish, so I think that was on the list of, which would help.
If you remember, they were in here one night and they told us they were going over. They have sent us an email saying they will, fire department will go over budget by two thousand dollars. So I don't think we've seen all their expenses yet, because right now they're on budget.
And so what if they're said, no, told, no, you can't spend over your budget because we don't have the money to finance it?
Well, my argument is you should come to us and say, I just entered into contract to fix my fire trucks and it's gonna, it's going to be more than what you budgeted and we will deal with it, but.
And I think you mentioned the word controls before. I think that we need to put something into place that if you have a budget to work within, that's what you work within. You don't have more money to spend than you have.
Unless it is approved by this court, I agree with you.
I believe last year they first came to us when they had a problem on the ladder truck. And we approved twenty-five or twenty-seven thousand dollars, whatever that figure was, give or take. At that time, we approved it. You people approved it also. This time with all the overspenditures, this time, they didn't come to us.
Well, there was hints when they said here, okay, last month, if you look, they had a fifteen over expended, which stood within our ballpark, but now they're over twenty, which is way out of our ability to deal with it. We're not going to go public here.
Shouldn't you not then ask them to cover this out of their endowment fund or whatever their fund is? I mean, and again, and I understand all the reasons on the ARPA money that you went over, but ten thousand dollars was forty percent over it. We're not talking about five to ten percent, that was a forty percent over it. I mean, that's extreme. This is extreme. So I agree with you that we do need a process. And it has to come back to this group because you run the money.
Correct. And as a cop out, told you, it's on the parking lot. Parking, parking lot, so yes.
So is something, you said Anne Marie's working on a policy for?
Yeah, we talk about that parking lot a lot, which is, that's the purchasing policy.
I think that would be a really, a positive option for the board of finance, the board of selectmen, that there is a specific kind of, a overspending. And it's, in my mind, it's simplistic. If you have, this is your budget, this is what you can spend, period. If you needed more, you should have presented that when we were going through the departments and creating a budget.
If something else comes up, they have to be visibly responsible.
Right, because now they're all going to surprise us, because the taxpayer, that, okay, we don't have enough money to finance this. We need more money, guys.
But the tape, I agree. Card, so the next time, what do we do about the other money?
So is there a timeline that Anne Marie is anticipating to get that in place?
She's worked with, she made a draft.
I don't know.
She's worked with, I mean, I can't hear, worked with, she's a draft.
Let's get your all bits out.
I don't know. Oh, we're questioning, okay.
This is on the purchasing.
I thought you worked with her on purchasing. I've seen a draft of the purchasing.
Okay, she, nope.
Okay.
I've got a bunch of others going, but not that one.
So she has a draft.
I know she has a draft, yeah. Any other business that you would like to discuss?
We've had a parking lot for a while, do we want to start reviewing it on a regular basis?
So yes, I sent it to Anne Marie in a Google Doc forum so that she could edit it. I didn't know she was, because I wasn't here last month, I know she wasn't going to be here tonight, or I brought copies so we could have discussed it, but yes.
Well, maybe at each one of our meetings, we should have on our agenda, one or two of those items so they get decided, they get settled, they get dismissed or put into place.
When she sends out the budget reports, maybe she could just also send that document out with it. I could ask her when she gets back from vacation, if that's okay?
Sure.
That way you've got a fresh copy every month of where we are on it.
But if you want to, I would have to have plenty of time to put something on your agenda.
So just, it would just be an item, review of open parking lot issue document?
Yes.
Yeah, fine. I think, yeah, it's probably been one along here. But I know, we talked about, Carol has worked with her on insurance. I was tempted to put that on, but it seems to me with this thick stuff, this, we were meeting, it's gonna go longer, but.
But can it just be a general, agenda item?
It can, it certainly can, it should be. My only thought was, there is a limitation to how much time is going to be moved.
I mean, we did prioritize, if I remember, there were three buckets, right? So maybe we put those that were high priority at the top, so that we focus on the right thing.
Well, you spend two minutes on it or forty-five minutes, depends upon how long the meeting goes and people's tolerance. Maybe.
Attention span.
And how much has been done? Because there may be months that go by where there's not a lot that gets done and other months where you get stuffed up.
Because a lot of it fell in Anne Marie's lap.
Right, exactly.
Before we dismiss, because I'm assuming you're looking to dismiss the meeting, how are we on lease cars being labeled?
We, I have a couple of designs, so we'll decide on these designs.
But we had the designs last time.
No, I had ghost designs, and so I went back to them personally and I got other designs.
And did you pick one from those designs that were going to be put on the cars?
I picked one, but I wanna, I just talked to the police about it.
Could I be so bold and ask why they have a decision and what goes on the car?
I was just trying to work with our police department in respect, but maybe give them a voice of what their choice would be out of what I picked out. I'll give it to the board of selectmen, if they come up with something, you know, whatever, but.
It's so, you're, it is going to be done?
The plan is to still have it done, I guess.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah.
Is it just a long, ongoing procedure?
Absolutely, and I was disappointed that the only ones presented to me were the ghost designs, which is not really, kind of not faded, but you know, like blends in, I don't know how you describe it, but it doesn't really stand out, you know. I guess they use them for cars, that could be more stealth, right? But so I called up the place and I got some different designs, and I will be picking some out to present to them.
Okay.
Is those the detective model for logos? I suppose two.
I don't know that it's.
Casper, ready, I'm signing over the honor.
No, Casper, I don't know Casper. The ghost is a.
Detective character logo.
Yeah, which is, just basically, they're transparent with a little bit of reflective material and so you barely see them.
So you can hardly see them when the car goes by, unless you're at a certain angle and you're looking at them. Come wide this way.
Or a light hits it and it's reflective back.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for asking, Carol.
It is possible that we could have a special meeting in August, so we shall see each other again. Happy trails to you. All those in favor of a journey? We say alright.
Second.